First item on our agenda would be approval of minutes.
I will move to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. Approve all bills, including a few on our desk extras. Anybody have any questions? Did anybody want to clarify any bills or answer any questions?
Both bills approved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Motion and a second to approve the bills. Roll call, please.
Otis.
Aye.
Jessner.
Aye.
Will Homi.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye. Motion carries. Financial reports. Anybody have any questions on the financial reports?
I will move to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve financial reports. Roll call, please.
Jessner.
Aye.
Otis.
Aye.
Will Homi.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye.
Financials are approved. Treasurers' checks. Anybody have any questions on the treasurer's checks? See some transfers to pay some bills and some must be reimbursements for over page.
Tax.
Tax refunds.
Yep.
Both bills approved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the treasurer's checks. Roll call, please.
Will Homi.
Aye.
Jessner.
Aye.
Otis.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye. Approve all of the agenda. Does anybody have anything to add to the agenda?
I will move to approve.
All right. Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Agenda is approved. N D S U extension. We have both Lindsey and Sarah here. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Just an update on agriculture, natural resources side. We have Rangers and I F, which is rescheduled for the third time, third times of, times of time hopefully. So no snow. That'll be March 16th. Supper starting at five and program starting at six. Daryl, Dr. Daryl Sacco will be in talking about calving and also Mark Miller with nutrition. Spring favor garden forum to engage all the gardeners in starting the spring will be starting March 20th. Evenings are from 6:30 to 8:30 and I'll be hosting in the Armory for those webinars. We're excited to be doing the first Progressive Egg Safety Day. We're inviting all fifth graders from Ramsey County to the Memorial Building. We have eight different topics that we'll be addressing and there'll be rotations. One will be a morning rotation. One will be afternoon to include all nearly 170, 150, 170 kids of Ramsey County. So we'll talk about Home Alone, water, sun safety, drug awareness, bathing, A2B safeties, mobile safety, farm safety. So get a whole mix of topics there. And lastly, we're just continuing on that recertification of private pesticide license. So the next ones are March 14th and March 30th. Yeah, we also have a lot of other stuff going on in the 4H world and the health and wellness world as well to take on to the egg safety day that you decided. We're not sure if this is gonna be, if we're gonna be a little overwhelmed, but Safety Day is the 13th and then we're gonna do experience agriculture field work on April 12th, the day before. So back to back events. So this is gonna be, this one is for area of fourth graders. So, you know, just to get, give them a chance to learn about where their food comes from. So we're excited to have our field work day on April 12th. And we, we take any, any help. So if you have any interest in assisting us with either of these events, we'd greatly, greatly accept your assistance if you have any knowledge about any of these worlds. We're continuing cooking classes at the Hope Center, Food Pantry downtown. Cooking 101 is Thursdays in the month of March. We had our first one last Thursday and it was, we had a great turnout. So we're excited, excited for more classes. We're also in the schools, various schools with education as well. 4H, got a lot going on in 4H. If you order, our candidate delivery is March 25th. That is our largest fundraiser for 4H. We, we, the kids did very well with, with selling those. So kudos to them and we'd like to thank.
March 25th.
March 25th, yeah. So pending weather, hopefully all the fruit can come in. But yeah, it's the best group. We also have a lot of mini camps that we're planning for spring and summer. We'd like to thank Lake Chevy and Carton Dealers for sponsoring numerous camps. We'll be looking for, for those coming up. We have a great opportunity with the Guardians for Health Pilot Program. And we're one of the only three counties in North Dakota piloting this program. Tricia Berg from our office is going to be the primary instructor and it's kind of dealing with safety with guns. And they just like the way North Dakota runs our shooting sports program. So they're piloting us to see if they could maybe take this nationwide. So we're really excited to be part of that. We're just kind of learning a little bit, a little bit about it, but we'll give you more information on that once we get, get more into that. Ramsey County 4H, our council, we're meeting later this week. They're our decision makers for 4H. So we're, we're just really glad to have a great 4H council. Cindy Olson in our office, she is awesome. She's always kind of thinking of things, new things to do. She's gonna start a new program called So Fun for Everyone. So it's, she just kind of let all of our 4Hers know about it. Gonna have little classes for, for the kids on sewing and thrifting and all sorts of things. So they're gonna round it out with a fundraiser for doing tie blankets and then they're, they're gonna give those out to those in need. And then last but not least, shooting sports archery is finally in full swing. We've got a full slate of kids signed up for that program. It runs through April. We've got some awesome shooting sports instructors that run those classes and we will be hosting the state air rifle match on April 1st downstairs in the Memorial Building. So we are excited to be, they always pick us to, to run the match. And that is, we know that our organizational skills are top notch and that is mainly because Cindy Olson in our office. So we can't.
And what was it, big on the state?
It is April 1st. Yes, so that is what we're up to. Top and visit us if you.
Busy, busy, busy.
Yeah, yeah.
Any questions for Lindsey or Sarah?
I have one. How many kids do you have enrolled in 4H?
Gosh, we are over, I think we're about 150. And we have to get those latest numbers from Cindy. 4H online. Yeah, yeah. But we'll, we'll do that. We'll, we'll get the latest numbers. Our shooting sports program does bring extra 4H numbers as well.
If none of you have seen that, you should stop down in the basement of Memorial Building sometime in March. For the kids, I wouldn't look to make them shoot pretty good.
And the gear that they wear, those air rifles. My goodness.
Yeah, we've got some top notch shooters. It's, it's amazing what they've done. And then we'll, we just pass out, we got these, North Dakota 4H camp. It's a great program. So if you want to help us spread the word, it's located in just south of Washburn. And it's kind of a hidden gem. So if you know any kids that, you don't have to be a 4Hers who has had 4H camp. So it is, it's a great, great location, right by the Missouri. A lot of opportunities for the kids.
Yeah, if you're ever gonna be, you should make it happen there too. Pretty cool place.
Right. Anybody can rent the location, the facilities out there for meetings, retreats. Air conditioned cabins, you can't go, go wrong with that.
Cool, cool. I very much appreciate everything you guys are doing. Anything else? Thank you both for coming in. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Moore. Steve secured a couple grants. Yeah. Since I came for that, knocked everything out today before it was. So I guess the first, it was, there was a cybersecurity grant that able to apply for and just received the second one. Noticed that received it yesterday. Guess the first is for $36,000 with 10% cost share. That could be matched, but that 10% may be covered by the legislature. They're still working on that. So it may be $40,000. And that's, that'll cover our new server and wiring, rewiring the county offices for, so we improve the security equipment for running the network. And the second one is for additional surveillance cameras and access control system. Or I guess that's for $26,000 and that's 100%. So that's.
So one was a match and one's a 100%? Is that how I read that?
Right. And the, the match may go away also. May not, I guess. So.
What was the total dollar amount, Steve? One was for $26,000?
And the others?
Thirty six.
Thirty six, possibly forty.
Do you need us to take any action on this today or you're just in that point?
I guess we have to approve them and sign everything and get it back within 10 days.
Okay. You go ahead and accept the motion to approve the grants.
I will move.
I'll second. Motion and a second to approve the grants from B E S for cybersecurity. And what was the other one? Surveillance cameras? Yeah. Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Great job. Thank you.
Yes. And I guess, since, since I was here, like to pay the annual maintenance on our GIS software, which is $3,300 this year. I guess that's the first increase. It was always $3,000 for the last 12 years, 13 at least. So I think it's not outlined that they finally agreed to advise, I guess. And that's the software I use to maintain all parcels and run all the evaluations on the farm soils and things.
To approve. Hold a second. We have a motion and a second to approve the annual GIS software, $3,300. Any further discussion, any other information, Steve? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Anything else, Steve?
I guess lastly, the GIS user, Esri user conference that I've attended annually, I guess, that I would like to go to again. It's in July for a week. I guess it's, it's always been very useful to get the latest and information on how to best use the software.
That's always in San Diego, correct?
Yeah.
I think people would question if we sent you to San Diego in January, but July is probably not as bad. So motion to approve out of state travel for GIS coordinator.
I will move. I will second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the out of state travel for the Esri conference in July. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And that is it.
And that is it? Thank you. Appreciate your time. Susie Kenner, Double Lake Tourism.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll sit over here so that doesn't have to look outside. I'm Susie Kenner and the tourism director with the Double Lake Chamber of Commerce. For those that I don't know yet, I've been there 14 years this coming summer. And about two years ago in April, we had gone through a legislative process, just to give you a little of a backstory. And legislature approved Change of the Century Code so we could accept lodging and restaurant tax on the county side, not just a city tax. So we started collecting that a couple of Aprils ago. And we have two people on our visitor committee board represented through the county. So I come once a year to give you a little bit of an update. So if I don't provide anything that you wish to know, please let me know. But I will just do a brief recap for you. I did provide a packet of all of our information. We put together fiscal year updates every year, which is the one that kids pursue. Snow shoeing on the front. That's just basically a recap from 2021 on where we've been and our projected budget for the coming year and where we are looking to spend our money. This year was a little bit different. We put together a three year strategic plan every three years. So we did that for this coming year, for the next three years. So just to let you know kind of what our strategies are in a nutshell. They're all kind of broken down, but just to highlight the points for you. We'll use the Double Lake North Dakota brand to promote and market tourism for the lake region. We are developing new grant opportunities as well as those that we already have for tourism related activities. We support and grow the efforts of Double Lake to deliver hospitality for visitors whose activities support tourism. We work to expand visit, winter visitation in the lake region. We work with local leaders on lake issues to continue growth in tourism. We are working with other partners to expand workforce in the Double Lake area. And we continue on with staff development to grow our knowledge. Like I said, they're all kind of broken down, our strategies inside the book. And I won't go over those unless you have any questions. But 2022 tax collections. And just so you know, we run on a fiscal year, not a calendar year. So I, I don't think it makes quite as big of a difference on the county side, but my numbers don't quite jive with the, with the quarterly numbers from the city and that's why. But our tax collections were up over $6,000 in 2022 compared to 2021. And we've been a really fortunate community through COVID with our tax collections to stay on an upswing rather than on a downswing. And I put that a lot to our community and having that with our natural resources that we have. So during those COVID years, we were still able to bring visitors in to enjoy our outdoors and our wide open spaces. So we have a lot to be thankful for here. North Dakota Tourism last year completed another study with tourism economics. And that is related to tourism related activity and spending in the county. And 2021 came in at $57.46 million, which was actually, is a record year for us. So we're pretty excited about that. I do have a graph on page three of our fiscal outline that kind of shows where we've been at since 2014. Another thing that we always take a look at is the North Dakota Game and Fish netting numbers. Just to kind of see where we're at and where we're going. We bring in a photographer every probably quarter and we get out in the outdoors. We get out to our different businesses and take updated photography that we can utilize. One thing that we started doing a couple of years ago is we shared those images that we take on Google for all of the businesses that we've been in for just some updated photography. And we, we keep track of those on Google. And so far this year, we've hit over 3 million views on all of our photos on Google. So we're pretty excited about that. And it just helps our businesses and the community as well as getting people to hopefully vote trips here. Last year in 2021, we attended the St. Paul Ice Fishing Show, the Madison, Wisconsin Show, and then an in-state Minot Show. Another thing that we, we are doing the last couple of years through the Destination Marketing Association of North Dakota. As a president for the couple of years, I was able to attend an international conference with the state of North Dakota. And why I'm just saying that is because it really opens doors for Double Lake. And we started a partnership with our Highway Two partners. So we are partnering with Minot and Grand Forks. And we built some different itineraries for people traveling through the state. A lot of our international tourists that come in either in Denver or Minneapolis market will spend 10 days to three weeks in the United States. So we're conglomerate as a state with five states total. So North Dakota, South Dakota, Montana, Wyoming, and now Idaho. And so we built itineraries as a state for people going through. And so we've worked with our Highway Two partners to build those itineraries through North Dakota to get them off of the interstate and up in our area instead. And we're seeing a little bit of momentum on the international side of the market. One of the places North Dakota tours and goes into is Germany. And I've noticed that Berlin is ranking higher on our website hits. So it is making a difference, but whether or not we get a lot of those international travelers in or not, it's been a great partnership for us on Highway Two and we'll continue to build that, to build that up. Something cool that I had talked about last year is Meat Eaters, which is a show off of Netflix. Wanted to come in last year and do an ice fishing show. They picked, they wanted to do an ice fishing show and they picked Double Lake to do that. And they ended up rebooking it a couple of times because the weather was so cold. They ended up coming anyway on probably the coldest day per week of like the decade. And so anyway, they ended up putting out on YouTube that they weren't gonna air the show. They didn't get very good footage. So Mike Jensen with State Tourism worked with their production team and just said, hey, if you're not gonna produce this, come back. You know, we will host you again. We'll get a good show for you. Well, they ended up making a show out of it anyway and it was actually pretty good. It didn't air on Netflix, but it aired on YouTube. And as of last week, it's had 384,000 people that have watched the show. So just another way that we're getting the message out about Double Lake and what all you can do here. We launched a new website in November. So if you haven't looked at it, it's doublelakeinde.com. One thing I want to note about that is we now have included with that a partner portal. So since we're stuck, we're tied to the Chamber of Commerce, we have members as well as our, as our tax collectors that are partners. And so that gives all of our members the ability to come in and put their own information in. So we've got amenities in there and different contact information and they can put their own pictures in and videos if they want. So it really makes it a little bit more interactive. So we're excited about that. And like I said, if you haven't looked, make sure you do that. We're pretty proud of it. Allison in our office put a lot of time into that. She did a tremendous job, so I have to give her kudos on that. And we watch our website trends. 50% of our users on our website for the last few years are looking at our website on their mobile phones. And in real time, we're noticing that they're actually looking at the website when they're here as well as when they're booking their trip. And so we've been really trying to be proactive and pushing out in time information so they know what they can see and do while they're here. And with that being said, we have the community event calendar. So I push everybody in the community, anybody in the room, anybody who's watching. If you're hosting an event in the community, you can put it on our event calendar. And you don't have to be a member of the Chamber of Commerce to do that. But we are, I would say a guinea pig, so to say, with North Dakota Tourism. We are the second community that they're using. And hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll have it ready to go. But basically our website will provide a feed to North Dakota Tourism's website, which gets millions of hits a year. And our, if you post an event on our event calendar, it will automatically post on northcottotourism.com's event calendar. So before, if we were posting something, I would have to put it on twice, on our website and North Dakota Tourism's. And now it'll automatically flow into theirs, giving all of our community events a lot bigger exposure. They do a really great job of pushing out all of the events. So as soon as that comes live, we'll get more information out to the community. If you take a look at our budget for this year, you'll notice that we dipped slightly on our advertising budget. It's not necessarily because our numbers aren't where they should be, but we ended up in our strategic plan, starting some capital, tourism capital grant for some improvements also in the community to help grow our attractions and things to do. So we put some money into that, which kind of shied our, our advertising budget just slightly. And I'm happy to say we have our first one in and our visitor committee will be looking at that here in March. So excited to be a part of that. We've got some exciting things coming up as some bucket list trips on our website. We had our routine here for the fall for a waterfall hunt and ice fishing. And then we'll, we'll have another one too with the media events here in Maine. But it's advertising wise, it's kind of a bucket list trip. So we'll have 15 second, 30 second and about a 90 second of video of families coming in and exploring our area and just kind of showcasing it as a, as a tripable lifetime for them. So we'll be able to push it out for advertising and then it'll be a click here to see the whole story. So excited to roll that out again next year. Excited, I don't want to take up too much of your time. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer anything. If there's more information you'd like for me, I would be happy to provide it.
Got a busy summer planned.
We do have a busy summer planned.
Devils Run, Double Lake annual chamber fishing tournament.
Rip Fest.
And all those good things.
Yeah, we're excited to see what the casino will announce for their summer lineup as well. That makes the community pretty busy as well. So excited to see that grow, that grow as well.
I'm thinking a lot of those images on channel 450 on M D T C is from Tourism.
Yeah.
Double Lake Chamber.
Yeah. We're really trying to grow.
That's really cool. Didn't know that channel existed till I slipped through and, and happened to see it. And yeah, it's really a neat opportunity to see a lot of different things that are happening in Double Lake.
Yeah. And the itinerary videos, we worked with a local, a couple of local kids called C. They changed their name. C3 Media, I think is what they're called now. But the Dick Brothers, Pastor Bruce Dick, they're his, his two boys. And we worked with them to, to throw those videos together.
Very nice.
Yeah, very exciting. And the nice thing about bringing in the photography and the videography that we're, we're utilizing is we partnered well with North Dakota Tourism and they have a small budget, just like we have, you know, a smaller budget. And so they try and get around the state every year, but you know, we, we have to take our share of the pie and get, get them here every so often, which they were just here. So the new campaign that they rolled out has Double Lake people and Double Lake imagery. But we're able to share that. And so if you notice the hunting and fishing guide and the new travel guide, a lot of the images that are in there, we were able to supply to them. So it's just another great partnership that, that we utilize with, with the state to, to try and grow our. to try and grow our visitation and our awareness as well.
Anybody have any questions for Cici? If not, really appreciate your time coming in. Thank you. Next up on our agenda, Elizabeth Black.
Good morning.
Tax Director.
Good morning. I'm here today just to give you an update on what we received for agricultural land values for this upcoming year. Today is not Decision Making Day. We actually make the decision at the June tax accommodation meeting on what we're going to be going forward. Just a quick background on how agricultural land is valued. It is not market value in North Dakota. There are three main factors that are used: the production data, the cost of production index, and the capitalization rate. The Department of Agribusiness and Applied Economics at North Dakota State University takes all these into consideration and comes up with what they need to provide the state. And then the state tax commissioner sends each county what our county average needs to be at. They do give us a 10% leeway, so we can be down to 90%. If you see the paper you received, this year our agricultural land came in at $759.63. In '22, our average was 671.62. So we are a bit out of compliance at about 87% approximately. Typically, in Ramsey County, we attempted to stay around the 95% mark. We're not just a cultural, but commercial and residential. That way, if anything skews either way, we have some ability to not have such a large change in either direction. I did also kind of put down just some approximate ideas of increases. One would be to get to 92%, which is a safe getting over the 90%. A 4% increase that comes to the 698.86. Otherwise, if we would stay with what we've done in the past, attempting to go to a 95% to be equitable with the commercial and the residential properties, that would be a 7% increase, which brings us up to 721.65 approximately. Obviously, numbers, there's a whole bunch of magic that has to be ran before the numbers are exact, but that's just a general idea. I did find a newspaper article in, I think it's called the Code and Paper. Ward County recently went over this, and they actually voted already. And they too did a 7% increase. I spoke with Ron, who is Hockinson, who is the person that runs all of this for NDSU. And to him, this was a bit of a surprise also this year. We've talked in the past, and we really didn't think there was going to be as many changes. But there's so many variables, he said, that you just never know what's going to happen. Why we're seeing it the most here is it's ran a 10-year, they take 10 years of production, and they dropped the lowest and the highest. Well, this year, we happen to have two high years in. We normally are able to drop one low, but 2012 was good, and 2021 turned out to be good, which wasn't necessarily expected because it was considered a drought year. But he said that some grain prices were high, some government payments were good. So 2021 just turned out to be a higher year than expected. So having two high years in caused this jump. He does think that next year we'll possibly see that again because we might lose 2012, but he believes 2022 will be a higher year also. But that's just speculation from somebody. So with that, my thoughts are obviously to, you know, make sure we're thinking ahead of the possibility that next year might be a year that we'll need an increase and not put ourselves in a hole where, if you look back to some years where we had a 12% or 26%, which the 26% was a little different because that had to do with the cap rate being fixed for a few years and levels. But so mostly, it's just to give you guys that information so you can think about it until June. Our office is open to talk about this. I am not the expert at this. I never, probably will be, an expert at this. I think there's one person in the state of North Dakota that's an expert at this. But he is a really great guy, and I can give you his phone number or I could offer him, you know, say he can come in for a Zoom meeting if you wanted to look into it further. I did catch him one year roundup and dragged him into a meeting here, and that was great. He's really nice. He's very enthusiastic about this. So he would greatly share any information he has on that. So other than that, that's just kind of what I wanted to share about what we found out from the state tax commissioner's office. If you look back too, you can see that, you know, we haven't had as many increases in the most previous years. But back in 2010 and that, they definitely saw increases of this nature.
How does this reflect on like, how is this in the county that I didn't tell them? Is this, how was this?
This would only affect agricultural land. So as far as homes, they're running, the farm homes that are being taxed, they're running the same as a residential home as far as the increases.
So is there increases in that coming to them?
Our sales, we are happy here. So our sales from last year are still very strong. And we are looking at probably an increase. I think a lot of the upper-level homes will probably see closer to a 10% increase that we're seeing because we've had such strong sales in those.
Anybody have any other questions for Elizabeth? I know I've been on the commission for a number of years and always looked at this as, you know, you never want to go up too much, or you don't want to go up at all if you could avoid it. But I'd rather hit with a small increase on a regular basis than taking a year or two off and all of a sudden come back with a 12% or 26% or 14% increase the following year. So something to think about between now and June when we finalize this.
And it is something that if we don't come into a compliance, then the state is allowed to do it for us. And typically, it seems like they come in around 92%, but it's up to whatever board that is at that time. There's no rule. They can bring 700% if they wanted to, I believe.
Anything else? Any questions? Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fieldson.
Morning. How are you? Pretty good. Okay, to start off with, we need to set the bleating rates for our 2023 summer maintenance contracts and include a spreadsheet of where our costs would have been for last year. So we're up just a little bit from previous years of our actual costs. But our hourly rate is down just a little, and that's because we just bought three machines two years ago, and our maintenance level is low on those. We're also more fueling our economical too. So right now, it's costing us about $154 an hour to operate the machines. But our summer rate, if you look at the bottom of the chart, our summer maintenance contracts are costing us about $582.30 per mile for the bleatings we do. And last year, we charged $300 per mile and $140 an hour. And again, typically, we've been going up just a little bit every year, so we don't see that big jump after skipping a year or two. This is really a lot to digest, so if you've got any questions on what this chart is about.
And there's something in century code that states that we have to be within a certain amount on what we charge to.
The century code says we cannot charge less than what the blue book is. And if you want to know the blue book value, you always have to contact the state highway. It's not actually a book that you can pick up and read. It's something they have on our website someplace. They average out all their contracts that they award through here. And I guess I've never, I've asked for those rates from the blue book before, but it's a struggle to get them. But that's what the century code says. We're not supposed to charge less than our actual costs. Or that actual, years and years ago, it said actual cost. Now it says according to the blue book values, blue book value.
Would you have a recommendation for us?
I would say we go up another $10 an hour, an hour per mile for bleating, and then up to $145 an hour for, we do $145 an hour for government, $150 an hour for private work, motorraders. That would be my recommendation.
So with the 310 a mile?
Yep.
And 145?
Now this year, we bought, in '22, we bought three more machines than like the two-year-old ones. So the fuel economy's good on them, so maintenance is out more than right now. That would go up a little bit every year. But currently, our hourly rate is quite reasonable when you look at the total dollar figures.
Like that motion be made today?
Yep, we need to get these out to the townships because they'll be needing on the 21st to decide what miles we want to bleed. So yeah, we would need a decision today.
Anybody have any thoughts, recommendations, want to make a motion?
This is something we said every year? So we sense the blue book being so hard to get hold of, years on hold.
I don't know, but my guess would be like $175 an hour for the machines we have. That's probably within five hours one way or another. And we're not supposed to go above that. We're not supposed to go below that, according to the century. We have for years and years and years and years, so nobody even gets their hands slapped over the deal, so.
So does that technically kind of average in that 145 an hour plus the 310 a mile? Is that kind of like you said, 175? So is that, you figure that kind of, you know, you get what I'm saying?
No, I don't.
Well, like the $310 a mile, that kind of averages out over the hour to get you close to that 175. Is that kind of what you're figuring, or?
No.
Okay.
Our actual costs are the 582.30, we're charging 310.
Okay.
So in eight years past, we've always figured that this is a taxpayer expense. Whether the county picks it up or the township picks it up, it's all taxpayer dollars. So we never really got too serious about charging the whole 582. One way or another, it's taxpayer money paid for. There are actual contracts that we sign. Every township signs a contract agreeing that they'll pay that 310 an hour for six bleatings. But then if they want additional work done, like if it wasn't on, say they got a mile somewhere that only needs to be bleated one time, then they can do it for $140 an hour or $145 an hour.
Okay.
That's another contract.
I would move to approve moving to, changing to $145 an hour and $310 a mile.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on rate changes for bleating township roads?
Could we include in the motion the private cost of, what would be $150?
$150 for private?
Yep.
You okay with that on your motion?
Yeah, I'll move to amend my motion to add $150 an hour for private work.
You okay with seconding that?
Yes, I will make that motion.
Second.
For second, sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Further discussion. Anything else Gavin, that down there? Or we should include?
Nope, that's it.
Proceed to vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, the second item, our gravel projects, chip seal, road oil, paper projects. Right now, we're just in the advertising stage, but I'd like a motion to go ahead and advertise for those projects. We do this every year also. Not more than anything right now. We're just advertising.
I would still move. I will second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and advertise for the projects that is listed. The gravel, chip seal, road oil, bleeder patches for summer projects.
Does anybody want to know what those projects are? At the next meeting, our, in the April meeting, we'll be awarding those, so we'll know exactly which ones they are then. We're doing quite a bit of gravel in this year.
Sure.
So you'll have a better idea of what we're paying for when we award rather than.
So what are some of them?
Oh, we're doing the Ramsey County Cadillac County line from Hammond West. We're doing Ramsey County 8 from State Highway 1 east to the county, to the Walsh County line. Also 7, which goes east of Brockett to the county line. And then 7 that goes west of Brockett for nine miles. Then Ramsey County 2 West from Grand Harbor, west, then north, and then back east again for like 16 miles. So those are the gravel projects we're advertising. And the chip seal project is Ramsey County 4 from 7, the Brockett Road, south to US 2. There's one mile right in Brockett there, that'll pave a piece between State Highway 1 and Brockett. And then Ramsey 8, between 3 and 4. So that's the chip seal project. Road oil is just for crack sealing, and our paper patches are for paper overlays that we do, which we pick later on. But right now, we're just getting per unit costs.
Did we vote on that, on the motion to advertise? Okay, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of advertising for the summer projects, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
If you look at our farm year road plan, the only thing that we haven't covered is the design for the paving on Ramsey 3 from State Highway 17 to Ramsey 8. And we need to pick up engineering firm to help us design that so we can pave it next year. Just roughly, I have estimated $65,000. Right now, we're at the step where we need to hire an engineer to design it. And then we'll come up with an estimate for us after we do that. We don't have to go through a bid process or an advertising process since we're paying for it. There are no federal dollars paying for it. So my suggestion would be have K L J go ahead and. So my suggestion would be have KLJ go ahead and do the design for that project from State Highway seventeen, south to eight, the eight that goes to Webster. And then that would be also include widening the shoulders on there, just so you guys are aware. We have to start widening our shoulders now, because as you raise things up, of course, it narrows it. So now we're at the point on our road where we need to widen our shoulders to accommodate the threshold. Which will add to the cost.
How much do you widen?
Usually two feet on each side, I mean, that would last twenty years, as far as maintenance part. I mean, depending on what you wanna spend, if you had four feet, you'd need a, an area for a car to recover, if you went off the road, that type of thing, or. Just depends on how much money you wanna spend. If you go two feet, you haul in X amount of dirt, if you go four feet, you have, haul in Y amount of dirt, you know?
Does that get built up too then, or it just gets widened?
Just get widened.
So what do you mean, the motion to?
Yeah, to hire the engineer to do the design work on that.
I would move to hire engineer.
KLJ.
KLJ.
I would second.
And that's the paving project?
Paving project for next year, right? We're just doing the design part now.
For twenty-twenty-four, right? Okay, we have a motion and a second to go ahead and hire KLJ for paving design work for our project in twenty-twenty-four. Any further discussion? If not, now those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Okay, now we have two more invoices, the DOT for bridge inspections, who were done last fall. Uh, one of them is sixteen hundred and forty-one dollars and six cents. And the other is eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-four cents. So the total of those two is ten thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty cents. So I'd like a motion to go ahead and pay those. So.
Second. We have a motion and a second, we're paying these, correct? A little call, please.
Will Hummy?
Aye.
Otis?
Aye.
Gessner?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye. Motion carries.
And of course, along with those, we have those certified letters explaining where we get our local match from, and they require a signature for the audit or inspection. So we should have a motion for the both two individuals to sign that certification letters.
I will second.
We have a motion, second, to allow the auditor and commission chair to sign DOT certification letters. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
And in some years, our weight limits go into effect before the third meeting in March. So we usually have the, the commissioner make a motion and put our own limits into effect the same time as the state highway puts theirs into effect. So just in case that's before the twenty-first. We never know how that works, but like a motion to go ahead and make, put our weight limit signs up the same time the state does.
I will move.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to go ahead and do Ramsey County's weight limit restriction same time the state does. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Then we normally ask the state highway patrol for help, plus the reinforcement there. Uh, I guess that chairman signs that letter also, but I don't know. I want a motion for the chairman to sign that letter for help for the highway patrol to help with reinforcement on our weight limits. Make something I need. Probably doesn't hurt.
I will move.
We have a motion.
I'll second, but I think Troy, I guess you're retired.
Really?
I don't, I don't think he's.
I think he's retired, right?
Yeah.
I mean, that just happened.
Okay, so. Did you get that, Candy?
Yeah.
I have, I have hard time peeping up with them, I gotta be honest.
Yep. So we have a motion and a second that chairman, uh, signed a letter over to the current commander of Devil's Lake District of Colorado Highway Patrol, asking for their assistance in enforcing the road restrictions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thanks, but by the way, I, like I said, I can't keep up with.
I, I don't even know why I know that, to be honest. Oh, I, uh, career. San Pedro supervisor, his son just graduated from, damn, he mentioned that.
Couple more things, I have a, uh, we have a culvert to put in on Venus, uh, on that Ramsey Cavalier County line west of State Highway twenty. It's a four-foot culvert, about fifty-six feet long, anyway, the cost of that's gonna be around sixty-five hundred dollars, but actually haven't got a firm quote from them yet, but it'll be under that sixty-five hundred. So I'd like to have a motion to go ahead and order that culvert.
So I'm moving. I will second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and purchase a, or order a culvert for a road way up north?
Ramsey Cavalier County line, yeah.
Ramsey Cavalier County line. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Is that splitting the cost with Cavalier County, or is that all ours?
You remember when they just, right now, they take care of everything east of Hammond, we take care of everything west of Hammond, you know? Probably about six years ago, we asked them to help with probably on our side. And at that time, they said, well, we're planning a big project on our east side, which was, I don't know, close to too many dollars mainly. And they said, well, would you guys agree to, we'll do all the maintenance on the east side a hundred percent, and you'll do all the maintenance on the west side a hundred percent? And we agreed to that then. So this would be all ours, in that case.
Okay.
All right. Last thing I have is, uh, this, it's April, or we're getting ready to do the spring maintenance on our motor graders. So we need to change a bunch of the filters and a little bit of oil, not much, but the oil sample bottles, filters, all of that stuff, it's gonna cost four thousand, about five thousand dollars to order the filters. Some of them are coming from Butler, some are coming from Napa. But we'd like, I'd like a motion to go ahead and order that, that dollar amount. Supplies for maintaining the motor graders. So I will, I will second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve purchasing supplies for maintaining motor graders. And was there a specific amount that you wanted?
Forty-nine, twelve, sixty-four, but you know, that could change, I mean.
Yeah, I hate to put a, an exact number on there. So roughly five.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Last thing I have, just to bring up the speed, that the heavy bridge, we, uh, we got, that got lowered to twenty-eight tons for total, total weight, and, uh, we looked into, we put that applied for, uh, money for replacement on that bridge. Last week, we got denied. Uh, there, you know, in two years from now, there'll be another full round of, of, uh, grant money or not grant money, but my federal money to, uh, replace bridges again, and we'll, we'll apply for it then, but in the meantime, Paul and I talked about looking at what, if there's gonna be anything we could do to raise the load limits on that heavy bridge. So we're, we're kinda looking at the reports now, see if there's anything we do, but for now, we did get denied for replacing on that bridge.
Have an estimate then what replacement cost would be?
Probably about, it's a big bridge, so I don't think it'd really, probably a million and a half or something like that.
Million and a half?
Yeah. Paul had talked about putting box culverts in there, but there's a lot of water going through that one.
That's a lot of water going through a box culvert.
They claim that's kind of a, a choking point, we have a control point now, so. I don't know, we, I think a bridge would serve better than her, but then that sort of bridge would cost a million and a half, if we went on a box culvert, it'd probably be just closer to one point one, about point two, something like that. But again, we were denied, so two years before we end up getting to do it again, do it again. But there may be a, a wooden beam, it's a wooden bridge, you know, like the pilings are all wooden, everything is wooden, so it ain't like you can go into there and weld steel to something to make it stronger, so. You know, if there's something we can do to strengthen it, we're gonna look into that.
And in two years, it could be denied again?
Absolutely, because there's hundreds of bridges that get applied for the, every two years. I think they said a hundred and sixty-seven bridges that were applied for on this road, I don't, I don't know how many got awarded, but I mean, that's a lot of bridges. You know? So that's just bringing up the speed on that. That's all I have.
Okay, any questions for Kevin? Well, we've been very lucky with some snow.
Yeah.
You guys haven't been doing any pushbacks on roads or intersections?
We've been doing some blowing, not no pushbacks yet, but we did some blowing with our big, we got a tractor blower on the back, it's not as big as like the state cities got. That's one thing I might look into eventually, just getting one of that big blowers like that, that would help with those big banks and intersections and stuff like that. Right now, we're getting by, we got a skin steamer and that tractor blower that we sent out to work together. And they get by, I mean, it helps. They don't do the job that they see the state doing.
Do you think that Ramsey County would qualify for that emergency snow money that the state's kicking around?
That bill that they make? Yeah, sure, sure they will.
Okay.
They switched the bill a little like next, so. It was like, it had to be, what was it?
Was it a, over a hundred and fifty percent of normal for the average for?
That started out at two hundred percent, that was, they lowered that, I'm not sure when they lowered that.
But I think that's something that's still, you know, for being a priority for the governor in an emergency, they're sure taking their time with it.
Yeah, regular non-scholarity.
Right. So hopefully we can, you know, if we qualify, we can get some reimbursement for some, for county and maybe the townships as well, so.
Yeah, I'm surprised like the, the big cities like Bismarck, Argyle, whoever isn't screaming or something, but their expenses have to be huge.
Yeah. So, all right, Kevin, thank you so much.
Yes.
Appreciate your time. So can we go into unfinished business with the computerated dispatch system, and Star is here and and we can get an update on that? Before you get into that, I had, did have a question for maybe both you and Candy, but on our sheriff's department, uh, bills. We had a bill for Rolet County sheriffs. And I noticed on our last, um, LEC, we had a bill there for Rolet County. For incarceration days. They're not, they're not getting paid twice, are they?
Yeah, I hope not.
Yeah, I see the, uh, bill for the LEC for Ramsey County Sheriff, uh, Rolet County.
Five thousand two seventy?
Yep, five thousand two seventy. And then I think at their last, uh, LEC, we had one for Rolet County for thirty-two thousand five hundred. So, um, just wanted to make sure that.
I will, I'll check when I hear what you have.
You can double check and make sure that we're not double paying them. So, computerated dispatch, and we had the joint powers agreement at our last meeting, uh, something that we have to get under this meeting, uh, for the computer, uh, central square. And, uh, we had sent a, a letter after our last meeting letting some of our concerns be known and and, uh, not sure if they were all addressed, um, I think that initial payment, you had, you and I talked about Star.
Yeah.
Should be where the annual subscription is.
Yep.
So Ramsey County would be looking at a seventeen thousand, twenty-one dollars and fifteen cents, um, for that. And this is set to live June?
July.
July, so, and that's when they want the annual subscription, correct?
Correct.
So, I don't know if anybody had any other changes, uh, recommended? With your communication with the city last night, did they have any, uh, changes?
Just that annual subscription.
And is this something that you would like back from the counties, or is it something that you're gonna bring up the LEC board next week?
It'll be, I have it at the LEC board, off the agenda for that, too.
So the LEC board will approve it, bring it back to the city's county?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Mr. Cummings, do you see anything that jumped out at you again?
Just the eighteen percent interest for maybe, it seems a little high, but maybe that's what you want.
And the one question that I've always had was, okay, you have all these different entities that are, are paying into it on an annual subscription. What happens if one of them decides two years down the road that they're not gonna pay it? Do they all of a sudden not get any services, or is it somehow that the LEC has to make that up in order for it to all work?
They would just lose access.
Lose access?
Yeah.
Sure, okay. And I do think that the Ramsey County one covers all our smaller rural fire departments within the county as well. So not only our sheriff department, but our, it was like rural fire department, Starkweather, Edmore. Trying to think what else was on there for Ramsey County.
Rocket.
Rocket.
And Edmore ambulance.
And Edmore ambulance. Really good value for seventeen thousand. It's gonna be an amazing enhancement to our nine-one-one services and our computerated dispatch and.
They were currently building the system this week. Yesterday was the first day and it was a long day.
Yeah, Sheriff Lang, oh, just in time.
Right, Sheriff, it was a long.
Right, Sheriff, it was a long day yesterday.
Oh, man.
So somebody drops off, drops off right there? Is that going to increase everybody else's contribution?
If somebody drops off on that annual subscription, does it increase everybody else's?
I don't believe so.
But it's based on volume, right? So the volume will go down.
Right.
The percentages will probably change, but though that cost won't be there anymore.
Might not be perfectly one-to-one, but. As long as those two tables get flip-flopped, I don't really see any other issues.
Okay. And that initial user payment, that had already been taken care of, correct?
Correct.
So that really should be maybe eliminated, that portion, and just go down to annual subscription fees with that table down there?
I think so, yeah.
Sold out, yeah. Okay. Anything else? Custodial contract working well with?
It's great.
Great. Fantastic, glad that worked out. Numbers seem to be looking good.
Slowly on the entries?
Yep. That's good. Sheriff Lang, you have anything to add on the jail side of things, or?
No, seems to be going well.
Wonderful, wonderful. Appreciate that. So we will go ahead and wait for the directed version of this to come back from the LEC board.
Okay.
And we'll get that taken care of at our, probably our March, what is it, twenty-first? Twenty-first meeting.
I don't know that you need to address it as a commission here if the proper form is given to the LEC board, because the LEC board should be able to approve it if we don't have any other changes. That's up to you.
Then we'd be able to just go ahead and sign off on it once those changes are made?
I believe you could. Instead of bogging it down even more, you know, adding another meeting to the process, our requested change would be that the table moves down to where number two is, and then paragraph one is eliminated completely and renumbered. Right? Not missing anything?
No, all right.
So as long as that happens, then I think if the board here gives you, our LEC members, authorization to vote on it, then you should be good.
Okay.
I guess one more thing. I think that's implied with your appointment to that board is that you have our commission's approval to vote on it.
So with those recommended changes, Star, you feel that that would be workable with the LEC?
Yeah.
Okay. So instead of, like Mr. Cummings said, bogging it down with another meeting, we could go ahead and maybe approve it with that recommended change for the commission to go ahead and sign off on it when the LEC board signs off on it and.
So.
Okay.
I'll check in.
We have a motion in the second to go ahead and sign the computerated dispatch joint powers agreement with those recommended changes. Any further discussion? If not, don't favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Star.
Thanks.
Appreciate your time. Star, you wanna stick your head across the hall and let them know that we're ready for the water board?
You going, who's more?
You're all.
Yep. Yeah. Good thing I got relatives to change that, and I don't get that far.
You're going now to the county, do you have the legislature? Brian, how are you? Are you ready for it? Brian, hold with the Ramsey County water authorities.
Yeah, we got a quiet month on our board. We've been discussing any updates, anything we have going on with our Ramsey County ten projects out, and that's all been pretty quiet. I think our office hours will probably change a little bit here, but that'll be announced next month. Other than that, really not far much to discuss at our meeting today. Are there any questions anybody else has been hearing in the countryside that have been coming to you guys, or?
There's a piece of legislation that's gonna be heard, twenty-three twenty-six, I think it is, and it has to do with that million dollar threshold on cost share EAs, the economic analysis of the state water commission. A few years back, the legislature approved a million dollar threshold for water projects to go through an economic analysis. Through administrative rules, the state water commission lowered it to two hundred thousand. And so there's a bill going through the legislature now that would hold the, their feet to the fire and make sure that they stay within that million dollar threshold, that projects below that million dollar threshold would not have to go through the economic analysis, which further delays a project and makes things, you know, a lot of red tape. One of the, one of the issues that they thought was happening in the water world was that water resource boards were fragmented projects in order to get it underneath that threshold. So one of the things in our discussion through the legislative committee was that snag and clear project that, for instance, that you did with, we did with Nelson County, those are limited to a hundred thousand dollars on assessment, and so if you add in a state water commission cost share to that, you could get below that two hundred thousand, but it's not a fragmented project. And so, and so I think there may be some confusion there, but it may be something that you may wanna look into and contact in that committee, or possibly even Commissioner Gessner as he goes down to Bismarck, currying on that this Tuesday or Thursday afternoon, County Commission Association, because the county has to sign off on that, on that assessment project with the water boards. And what it is, is a fifty cent an acre assessment for snag and clear to do a drain that's not a, an assessed drain, to be able to go in and do a maintenance project on that. And it seemed to work out really well with the project that we did over in partnership with Nelson County.
Well, that would be, one question we'd probably have, we're actually, we're discussing that a little bit today. There's interest over that country, this is all coming from that leads to Rocket area, which is pretty much swamped in a lot of areas. And we did that snag and clear project, I don't know that we heard anything negative from any of the landlords in the area about that. How, it might be something for the commissioners to talk amongst yourselves as to how receptive you are to more snag and clear projects, or, you know, as a board, we feel the guys really should go for the full assessment project, which is much more costly, takes a lot more time, voting and all that. Snag and clear was pretty simple, but, you know, it's simple also comes with having to ask permission from the commissioners and all that to get that done. You know, we probably wouldn't mind a little guidance whether you guys view the snag and clear as a good projects to go forward with, or if you'd really see, you know, the landowner assessment project or style project being pushed ahead. Right now, like from the Clear Bartlett, you know, it didn't go all the way up to Rocket, which is where the watershed starts. You know, the guys on the north end have asked for years for projects to be done out of that area, they haven't gotten very far. We've got guys from east of there bringing in concerns about water. So, so an area we'd really like to help out, and, you know, we're just trying to find the best ways to do it, you know, the guy that came in, who has been talking with us, we said we'd like to see landowner signatures on petition to help us take the line, that will help us judge the, how much money we should put into trying to get a project going. You know, they saw how well snag and clear works, so they like, kinda like, keep talking about that, because it's the cheapest way to get anything done, but comes with, you know, the sun sets on that project that's done at a certain point, too, so.
That's a five-year deal, right? So it's a fifty cent an acre assessment for five years, but it's something that, it's not a permanent assessment, and I don't believe that there's a vote of the people. People are informed that they don't vote on it because of the least amount of dollars that, but it has to be approved through the county commission in order to allow the water resource district to go ahead with it.
Local landlord, well, the only real input they get on it is that they come to a meeting and voice their displeasure with it, which, you know, we, there's a two county project, so we had two meetings, I don't remember there being any opposition on either one of them. But, you know, there's a difference between being to put a vote on it and having to come and state your displeasure, so.
But you're basically cleaning out a natural waterway.
Right, that's nothing more than a clean out of what's there. You know, an assessment project, you've got the option of what most of ours are right now, is they're natural projects. Couple of them, they were set up as construction, because they did the culverts and stuff on them. I don't know if there's a whole lot of great chance of construction projects being approved anymore, just especially in this area, because as soon as you say construction, that brings into the state, it's being our area of significant water issues.
I'd rather have a snag here, because it's a natural waterway myself, I mean, that just makes sense to me.
It's a quicker, easier process and it's not.
And you're not, you're not changing anything, you're just making it easier for, you know.
Yep. Just get the water so it can run.
Naturally, I know you're not changing elevations, you're not changing speed, you're not changing volume, you're just changing the crap that's in there, I mean, that's, to me, that makes the most sense, the most logical.
Yep. You know, and in the state, there's, you know, depending on the areas, snag clear is kind of development, I think mostly for rivers, get the trees out, and it's kind of been used a lot to just clean out basic channels. You know, there, and that gets to be where you get some detractors for the project, starting that it wasn't supposed to be used for that, but it works very well for it. But if, if our bosses at the commission here don't approve of it, you know, we don't wanna push that as an option, so it's kind of, a little guidance is all we'd be looking for is.
Well, to me, I, if you're looking for petitions or, you know, majority of the landowners sign if that's something, I think that's, that's a good way to go, because you're building your, your base for support. You know, I mean, you're always gonna have one or two people that aren't gonna be happy, so it doesn't ever matter. I mean, if we vote out, they're not, they ain't gonna change that. But I, sounds to me like that common sense way to do it.
That's what we did on the last one, you know, we asked them, just so we know that there's not three people here that are pushing this, and everybody else in the countryside is gonna step up later on and say, no, give us something to go off of right away that we can say, hey, we've got the majority of the area that seems to be in favor of us, we can discuss it, so.
Yeah, no, I, I think that snag and clear is a good option to use, a good tool to have in your toolbox, and so hopefully that doesn't ever get taken away right down at the state level, but I'd say go ahead and, if you have some of those that you could do, go ahead and get some of those planned out, or worked on and what have you, and bring them back to us for our support.
Okay, that's probably what, you'll be hearing a little more.
That's a county, the snag and clear, and the old McCool, that'd be pretty good. I'll sign up petition right now.
Have you heard Jeff about the updating of the IWI information?
I had asked Chuck yesterday for the update, and he was gonna have a staff member get back to me. I don't know if I've gotten anything today back from him or not.
I don't know if the rest of you are familiar with the IWI, it's International Water Institute technically, to the joint board, we've supported funds towards it for mapping in the area, LiDAR mapping. What it does is it gives pretty much anybody with internet access the same information that they can get by running to an engineer and spending money, is like where water flows and how much should flow at elevations. It's a, we use it quite a bit. That's really how Ben Bartison got started with the Clear Bartlett project, is using that to find out where the flows were supposed to be going.
So the hydroconditioning process for the whole Doubles Lake Basin is about ninety-five percent finished. We expect the final DE on product ready for delivery in a couple weeks. Do they want to add on an external hard drive? The hydro condition DE, not yet, we have the IWI map portal, however, we do have to communicate with, and I don't know what that initial stands for, HEI first. So probably ask them for a hard drive of that when it is completed, and that way we can have a copy of it and, and I can share that with Steve and he can get done Ramsey County. I think that one foot contours, we already got on there, because I've gotten those from my guy and shared with Steve, and so that's already on our county parcel viewer, the one foot contours versus the two foot.
Okay.
But it's just not on that IWI yet, and that's where it's gonna make a difference, is when you can do those watershed boundaries and the flow charts on the IWI. It works well, Kevin has used them, his engineers have used them, just to kind of confirm what's either in there, or see if we, something that needs to be replaced and updated.
When you start talking about that Rocket country, that one foot to two foot contours doesn't sound like very much, until you start looking at that area over there, and there you start looking at extensions, you make the difference as to which direction water flows.
Yeah, it's very flat over there, and landlords have complained for years that it backs up on, and that just stays there. And so we could try to find a way to help and alleviate that, and bypass that lotton pooly area and bring it south, instead of having to come all the way west, it would be a really a big deal.
Where a lot of the questions come in is, you know, the lotton guys have been very vocal over the years, trying to find something to do, and there's just nothing, you know, the water having to come west, there's really no way we can find to help them, but it isn't gonna spend a whole lot of money and probably not gonna gain very much. But here, we can start taking this water south over there, you know, it's really easy water from coming north, this Edmore water that overflows and goes down into their country, you know, that might push through the east side of this, instead of back, now they're having to go back all through the one little ditch that they have. So that's, we really have great hopes for this eastern side, that if we can do anything over there, it's gonna help a lot of people, so.
And that would help so much over in the Reagan, Webster flats area, because instead of having both the lotton and the Edmore coming into Morrison, you just have the Edmore. the Edmore. And still probably too much for that system to handle, but it wouldn't be nearly as much as adding the lotton to it.
Yep. So, when you really start studying the water, there's not very many places that it runs. Everything we have has an overflow that runs into the next one, and as soon as it starts overflowing, that's when they have problems, and that's when Kevin starts getting phone calls and.
But, but looking at that satellite imagery, that, that lotton, there's ways that that could have, probably should have gone south at one point, how we did. So I don't know if it would be a major project, but certainly have to get some statewide approval on it and move some dirt to get it done, but if we do it the right way, maybe they'd say okay. And maybe by the time we get something like that done, it would be, the lakes would be lower than what the pumps can operate at, and then they're going to be so concerned about the cost of operating pumps when we're adding more water to it. Really not adding more water to it, it's just getting there quicker than.
If you start bringing some of the fresher water into the east side naturally, you know, I can't see any downsides to that either.
Right. Start improving that water quality over on that side as well, so. Anything else?
No, that's really been the extent of our meeting, it's just a basic office management stuff, and then a little bit of discussion on that, how much interest there is, and it's been an ongoing conversation from that area right now.
Yeah. All right, any questions from the commissioners? Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
All right.
Want to do new business in executive session very last?
Let's do a new business, then we'll do executive session last. So we have a raffle permit. Take the motion to approve the raffle permit.
I have someone.
Second, and immediately second that we approve the raffle permit. Double check, that is, is that lakes close up?
Close up.
What, cooldown?
Yep.
I don't know why I have a seat in there. Uh, to be held at the Devils Lake Speedway, it's a fifty-fifty raffle. Any further discussion? If not, I want favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign. Oh, it carries. Then we have a homestead credit. Motion to approve.
I approve.
Okay. We have motion in a second to approve the homestead credit in our packets. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, and we're going to go to a DOT, Highway Two East project. I just wanted to bring you commissioners up to speed with that project that DOT has been working on for a number of years, and trying to make that stretch road safer, been on a number of accidents out there, some resulting in death, some significant injuries, and they've had a couple of public meetings throughout last year on their design proposal of J-turns. So if you're on the north side of the road and want to go east, you have to go west and then back around to the east. A lot of opposition from local residents, township officials, thinking that that would be a very cumbersome way to meet the, the current traffic needs and meet the needs of improving safety. So there was enough public opposition, community opposition to those J-turns. I think that the DOT is going to scrap that project and look at the different.
Dennis Johnson talked to, had a DOT down at Bismarck, and that's what he gave to Dennis.
So, I had heard too that they were moving forward with it, and so, so there was a lot of.
Pretty good source, I don't know.
Yep, yep. So, we'll continue to follow up with that, you know, safety is obviously a huge priority, people traveling to and from Devils Lake. But like, Ms. Kenner said that improvement on our Highway Two corridor could greatly improve business development, and certainly business residential development east of town on Highway Two has, has increased over the number of years, and maybe not the best planning has gone into that. There should be maybe some frontage roads with some limited access points and those kind of things, and greater turn, turn lanes and different things like that. But I think that we can improve the safety that is needed without doing these goofy J-turns that, you know, it would be one thing if you had a semi and a forty-foot trailer, yeah, probably still difficult, but if you've got a four-wheel drive tractor with an air seater and a nerf tank on behind it, how long is that? You know, a hundred feet?
Look how slow it's going.
You know, and then it's going to be moving slow.
I mean, you're moving at three, two, three, whatever, hour, in that turn, and you're going to take up the whole road to get that thing, that's just stupid.
Right. So, we didn't like it, we told them we didn't like it, they continued moving forward, so we kept going higher and higher with our request to adjust that, and, and so I, I don't know for sure, but I'm, it was scheduled for twenty twenty-four, was it? So we have some time to work with DOT, and that's something I told, I got in touch with Ryan Gelman, our Vision Zero Coordinator with Association of Counties, and he said he would reach out and maybe facilitate a meeting with DOT and their engineers and the public, and see if we can come up with a workable solution to make that stretch of highway more user-friendly, safer environment for people coming into our community and living in our community. Those accidents that have happened out there have been absolutely devastating, and a lot of it is high-speed distracted driving situations. So, you know, I'm sure Lang, I don't know if you, you had any dealings with accidents out that way since you started your tenure, but.
Not since I started.
But certainly aware of the situations out there, so, and, so we'll continue investigating, and like I told Ryan, I'm more than happy to work with DOT and coming up with solutions that we feel that would work and to everybody's benefit, and solve the initial problem that we got of improving safety, so.
Yeah, I think we just keep, keep, keep bringing that up, so.
Yep. So.
I did have a question about the employees I dealt, and a couple of instances, they talked about county cost share, on some, some of the things they were thinking about, and they talked about lighting.
Could be. You know, and that could be the predicament that we get ourselves into is saying no hell no to a, a project that they're sponsoring, that they're paying for, that, well, if we're going to go with your recommendation, you're going to have some costs involved in it. Could be the cost of, whether or not we look at service roads.
Frontage roads.
Frontage roads. You know, those become our responsibility, I would assume, for maintaining. But.
There will be lighting too, at the major intersections.
Well, we've talked about various different things on how to improve that, you know, whether creating additional turn lanes, extending those turn lane lengths, having an acceleration lane when you turn, so you can turn into an acceleration lane and build up speed before you merge into speeding traffic, or so there'd be three lanes of, somebody's all of a sudden not surprised by a twenty mile an hour tractor that's, you know, in the main driving lane, so. Or reducing the overall speed coming into town, starting at the rest area. I know that's a long stretch of road to, to limit the, the traffic speeds, but I think that, any improvement we do for our road out there, I think will improve the desire for people to continue to build out there, whether it be businesses, resort environments or, or homes, so.
I think that, that, I think the guy's name is building those propane tanks, or big tanks.
Joe Gleason.
Gleason, he has some issues with women.
Yep.
Tanks.
Yep. Well, and he'll have some monsters, so he'll need some, some support anyway when he's pulling those things out, so. But, yeah, that's another, another area of concern right there, so. And then that dry bean, they got a lot of trucks coming in out there, and then you have a lot of RV traffic going in and out of Hayvale over there, and then a lot of them heading south on the Woods Rutten Road, heading that way, at the rest area, so. And then you have a lot of agricultural land all the way into town from, you know, so, and then you have an agricultural implement dealership out that way too, so, a lot of, a lot of traffic out that way are concerned, so. But, like I said, I'd be willing to, to sit down with DOT and, and work through a process or what they feel would be best and what we would like to see and those kind of things, so. But, that's all I had on that, unless anybody else has any discussion. I did have some documents in my office that I had from public meetings, if you want to, anybody wants to look at it, I'd be happy to share it, but I didn't keep extra copies.
I think it's all on the internet too.
Yep, yep. So, visitors, delegations, Sheriff Lang, you have anything for us?
Well, no, the only thing I got is we hired a gap as a deputy, she just got a limited license, she's going to start working part-time, so she's going to start with the POT program up here at Lake Pigeon, so she'll be done in May, so maybe she'll come on full-time. And we offered a position to one of our dealers, he just took his psych test yesterday, so we're just waiting to see the results, and hopefully we can get him a limited license and get him going, and get him maybe happy.
Thanks. Do we want to do portfolios before executive session or after?
Nothing before.
Okay. Commissioner Gester, would you like to start?
Well, we've got some meetings coming up, hopefully, I almost skipped the social with legislatures on the last day, so I get to the library board meeting, I haven't been able to nail. The twenty-second is when the grammar grant is supposed to be finalized, or we're supposed to know one way or the other, so that, that board's going to meet on the twenty-second for the chair, for the chair board. I'm going upstairs and talk to county agents here after this, to send me whatever, and I'm going to be on some other board, so I think hopefully that'll happen. By the commission, it was suggested that we meet after our meeting, during the mission meeting, and I don't think that's going to work, it was going to be a long day, probably too much togetherness.
No.
So we're going to have to find a different date for that. I think that's it. Sheriff Lang just told you that we got one hook set, and hopefully be able to hook the next one, so. That was, that was an interesting process, and I, the two candidates that we have to get out, we should be really good.
Commissioner O'Hara.
I don't have anything.
Okay. Commissioner Otis?
I don't either. I did, I had to miss two meetings this last week with social services and minority chairman, and I tried to hook up with the social service meeting via phone or my travel, and I couldn't make the work, so I was unable to report.
That happens, it's all right. So, a little bit of an update from the airport, work has begun on the terminal remodel expansion project, recent construction's handling that, and have already begun, so hopefully that is going great guns. We have our EAS, our essential air service contract, is coming due the end of June, and so I've been working through some different proposals that the airport had received. We did receive a charter proposal from SkyWest, which is our current carrier, and it would be a little different system, but it's not approved through federal DOT, this charter program, and so we're trying to work through that process, or have an alternative EAS, just so we can keep that jet service. They're the only ones that sent a proposal in for a jet service, and that's something that we rightly want to keep. One of the options that they did provide with that charter service or that alternative EAS was having the opportunity to go both east and west. So they would provide a Denver round trip as well as a Minneapolis or Chicago round trip, depending on what day of the week or what have you, but going back to the east would be good. Keeping our west, we've got, you know, gotten people really accustomed to liking and utilizing the ability to go to Denver. There's a lot of airlines in the eastern, or go to that, go to Minneapolis, but not a whole lot of them go to, to Denver, and if we can keep that round trip, but add a Minneapolis, that'd be, that'd be really great, and I think that would really help our ability to get to those next thresholds in our margins, our, our passenger numbers. So if we, we were just shy of, what was it, seven thousand passengers this past year, if we get up to that eight thousand, we get another, and I think right now we get a hundred and fifty thousand federal aid, if we get to eight thousand, we get another three hundred and fifty thousand, but if we get to ten thousand passengers, then you get a million dollar threshold or funding from the federal. So, and that can be used for operation maintenance, employee salaries, a lot of different things that you'd be able to do with your airport, but won't affect local taxpayers who would be coming directly out of that money that you'd receive. So that'd be a big deal if we could do that. The other proposal that we received was from a company that uses a twin-turbo prop plane, they're based out of Alaska, they haven't serviced anything in the lower forty-eight yet, we're a little unsure, and that's why we chose the, sticking with the SkyWest, and their only option would be to go to Minneapolis. I think going to Denver in a turbo prop would be a little rough, and it could be a slower, longer flight, so. We want to stay with the jet service and SkyWest, and so I know Scott Cruz, our airport manager, and our board chairman, Dennis Holt, are down at the State Aeronautics Convention this week, schmoozing, schmoozing with legislators and FAA officials and state aeronautic people and other airport managers across the state trying to secure that, so. Law enforcement center, we do meet the fifteenth, and just a reminder of our joint agreement that we'll discuss here shortly in executive session with the city of Devils that we'll discuss here shortly in executive session with the city of Devils Lake, Monday the thirteenth at five thirty, based on meeting room here at the courthouse and hoping everybody can make it. Once that facilities agreement between the city and the county gets done, then the law enforcement board can go and do their joint powers agreement amongst the five entities that operate the LEC. That's one of the things they've been waiting on is that approval, so. That's all I have for announcements, I think. Danny got anything? Danny's got a new person, we met her last meeting, Leslie Eftman, working out good?
Yes.
Yeah.
Very good.
So. With that, Bo's got a script for me to read. Next item on the agenda is an executive session, this item may be discussed in executive session. The illegal authority for closing this portion of the meeting in our Central Route forty-four oh four nineteen dot one and forty-four oh four nineteen dot two. Purpose of this executive session is to discuss negotiation strategy relating to the Law Enforcement Center facilities, joint powers agreement. At this time, a motion would be in order to discuss the next topic in executive session rather than an open meeting. Is there such a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Willholt.
Aye.
Otis.
Aye.
Gessler.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye. The executive session will be recorded and all members of the governing body are reminded to limit their discussion during the executive session to the announced topic. Any collective discussion, collected, collective comment or other final action by the governing body must occur after reconvene in an open meeting unless final action is best typically required by law to be taken during the executive session. There are prohibitions on taking final action during the executive session does not apply to providing guidance or instruction to our attorney or negotiator. We will now ask that the members of the public who are attending the meeting to please leave the room. We anticipate adjourning the executive session and reconvening the open portion of the meeting at approximately. About ten fifteen. It's nine fifty-five now, the minutes will show the executive session will begin at nine fifty-five and was attended by the four commissioners present, Commissioner Gessler, Commissioner Willholt, Commissioner Otis and myself, along with the county auditor Candy Christoperson and state's attorney, Commissioner Horace.
We want to pause for a second.
Yeah, if anybody needs to use a vacuum or anything, knows the time.
So we saw at the city last night, they have their chief of police on.
Are we going to say we could have Brian in here if he's still around?